Spinning activities to learn about Black History Month. Um, the lessons and activities were kind of geared towards like um Black heroes that have impacted our society and learning the importance of what they have done. Uh, moving to the middle school, um, they're gonna have a performance by diversity tomorrow called Brazilian Beats. And it's a kind of a follow up to the previous um presentation they had last month that was put on by the PTA. Um, it was African drums and it was just a cultural performance for the whole school to um to experience. Um, moving on to the high school, there's a lot of updates and March is typically a jam packed month with everything going on. Um, starting with sports, uh, both the boys and girls basketball teams are in the state tournament, so it's exciting. Um, tomorrow the girls will play home at six thirty and the boys will take a trip to Salem on Friday night for a seven o'clock start. Um, this Sunday, the Trillium team will compete for a regional title and a spot at the state championship, which will be the following Sunday, March time. Um, the week after that, we head down to Florida for nationals, which has been a long journey, but finally happening. Um, we're month, month, one month out from the drama production, Malumia. Uh, opening night is Thursday, March twenty eighth, and the second night of the show will be Friday, March twenty ninth. Um, Principal Silva has just updated senior privileges, so now we get to leave uh every block, which for our senior lab, regardless of when it falls in schedule, so I'm very excited about that, a lot of us are. The seniors had an assembly today to announce senior superlatives and March Madness, of course, is this month, and it will start on March eleventh through the fifteenth. And spirit days came out yesterday, so just to run through those is Monday is Anything But A Backpack, Tuesday is Childhood Career Day, Wednesday is Adam Sandler versus Taylor Swift, Thursday is Dress To Impress, which is a tribute to Mr. Crusio, um, and Friday is Class Color Wars. So as always, the traditional gym competitions between classes will take place on that Friday, the fifteenth, so um Trilliums will miss it. We'll be heading up Florida that day, but it'll be safer for us.
Thank you. Busy.
Yes.
Superintendent tomorrow?
Sure.
Um, the week of February fifth through the ninth was National School Counseling Week. And I just wanted to shout out to all of our guidance counselors, all our adjustment counselors at all of the buildings. The amount of work, the amount of time, the amount of conversations, um, and all of the good work that they do in support our students and their families. Uh, we can't say enough good things about them. Uh, we'd like to have, you know, more adjustment counselors, more guidance counselors throughout the district. Um, we hope that we can add, add one um at some point, um, which would be a great addition. I know that we'll be adding a few um through the North River Grant, um, and using the interns again. We've, we've asked for a few more for next year through the North River Collaborative Grant. So, um, they do a lot for our students, they do a lot for our families, they do a lot for us, so I want to thank all of them. Um, and we gave a shout out to them, uh, the National School Counseling Week. Our annual town report, we do our March twenty second, we're getting them in from our principals and uh obviously I'm writing ours, uh, one from us and the school committee, and we'll, we'll have them done uh for the twenty second and head it up to the town. I want to wish Ms. Penny Maloskis, uh, she uh a instructional support assistant. She is retiring after twenty-three years of dedicated service here at the high school. I hope to have her at a, the next meeting to, uh, to be acknowledged by the school committee. We posted all district positions, um, all teaching positions, all instructional staff assistant positions. We have posted uh prior to February vacation. This is a very difficult time for, um, I think, all employers to get employees. Um, teaching is a difficult field, our instructional assistants have a, a difficult job. We have lots of students, uh, we need lots of people, we need lots of hands on deck. So we have posted all of the positions, they are coming in uh on a daily basis. And we continue to call in ISAs, nurses, as quickly as we can, uh, to fill positions that we have lost throughout the year. Um, we also have uh teachers, staffing, who are out on extended sick leave, uh, so we're trying to get substitutes um at this time. So I did want to, uh, Mrs. Byrne had even suggested it tonight, we'll also be, I think, putting something up on Parent Square over the weekend. We are looking for substitutes, we are looking for instructional support assistants at this time, still looking for um nurses. It's, they're difficult positions, we understand that. We do have some um LPNs, um, we have RNs, um, CNAs that we are looking for. Uh, we do have some students who need one-on-one medical attention and we um need one CNA?
One.
CNA, so we are looking for those positions. Um, if you are uh a student at BSU is our closest to Bridgewater State University and you are graduating in the spring, I hope that you will stop in and see Dr. Williams at the table, I think it's coming up um in a few weeks. First week in May, um, and sign up and come to see us here, um, come back to East Bridgewater and if you are, uh, can sub, um, come April or May when they let you out and you know that you're graduating in May, we'll certainly put you on our substitute roster, so. Pretty quick tonight, great, yep. Um, just, we did have a snow day last week, so we pushed this agenda from the snow day to this, to this week. A couple of people had called in and said, I didn't see the sunny agenda, I didn't see that. Just want to tell people that when we do have a snow cancellation, we still have to get the agenda, we still have to sign the warrants that should have been signed with you on that date or something that has come up on those dates, we have to get them in onto this agenda. So they, so if we have a, it's just like in school, if you have Monday off, you go to the next day, but yet you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to see some of the work that we had. So the agenda stayed the same, and again, as we push the agenda out, as I, as I turn it over to Dr. Williams, she's going to talk about instruction, uh, part of it and my, what we're doing, um, in that area.
And for the purposes of the agenda, the strategic plan two, we're gonna move that to March twenty-sixth.
Yes.
For clarity.
Which is just, yeah, she's gonna talk about it.
Yes, so of the three strategic plan goals, strong instruction being one of them and assessment being the other, uh, we have scheduled for them both to present on the same night, just because there's a lot of correlation between what we're doing instructionally and how it's impacting our data with assessments. So you can expect both teams, uh, the strong instruction subcommittee to the strategic plan as well as the monitoring progress assessment group, uh, together presenting on that evening.
What date?
Uh, it's the March twenty-sixth, because the budget hearing is the twelfth, so we'll present on the second meeting of March. So just a, a couple of highlights that I wanted to mention was two recent grants, uh, that we've been awarded that we're working on. The first one is the social emotional learning, uh, mental health grant, and this was for ninety-three thousand dollars. It's mainly for tier three, so when we talk about tiers of instruction, we also talk about the tiers for behavioral and mental health needs. So tier one is what we're providing for all students, tier two would be a little bit more intense supports for students who may need maybe small group or check-ins with guidance or school adjustment counselors. And then tier three is for those students that need, uh, more intensive supports. Usually it's maybe, uh, therapies outside of the school day. What we're finding is more students needing that level of support, uh, and families really having a hard time finding where they can get that support for their children, not being able to get appointments, having a, a difficult time, uh, making appointments around the school day. So this grant, uh, fifty thousand of the ninety-three thousand will specifically be for us to partner with, um, an outside agency where we could then get the students that tier three level of therapy support, uh, that is beyond what our staff can do just with the limited amounts of time that they have and the majority of students that they're working with. Uh, the rest of the grant will be used for some of our tier one supports, specifically at the Mitchell School. They're working with the Cultures of Dignity, um, and that will be for professional development staff. Uh, as well as, um, we have a new club that was formed, the Share Active Minds, specifically around mental health. And so the grant will pay stipends for the two teachers, the two staff members who are the advisors for that group. So we're hoping to build momentum with Active Minds, do a, a more proactive, positive approach, uh, to bringing awareness to mental health needs uh, and hopefully, you know, eliminating the stigma along with it and giving students the resources and the, and the outlets that they need. So that's the SEL grant. The other one, um, you've heard a lot about, because we've had it for a number of years, I believe it's since COVID, um, that we have had the ability to apply and thankfully been awarded the Math Acceleration Academy's grant. We just ran one last week, February vacation, this grant was for a hundred and thirty thousand, split between April vacation and February vacation, sixty-five thousand for each week. So February one ran last week, if anyone had any one they knew went to it, uh, it was very successful. The numbers were a little bit smaller, um, about a little over sixty students, uh, but it was a really good ratio, uh, with thirteen teachers, two guidance counselors, a nurse, uh, a few special area teachers, six ISAs. It was about a one to six ratio of staff to students, which was great, because it really gave the attention that students needed. It was specifically for students in grades three through ten, uh, and April also is for three through ten. However, we've just applied for the summer grant, uh, and if we are awarded that, that will be K-attend, uh, and it will be for both math and ELA. So that would be good, that it will cover a much broader group of students. So those are the two recent grants. One last one I wanted to just throw in, um, as the superintendent was talking about the guidance counselors, uh, we have a grant right now called MYCAP. And CAP stands for Career Academic Planning. And the commissioner's been talking a lot about chronic absenteeism and how we can get students more engaged. Uh, and this grant allows us to put a team together, I have five guidance counselors, um, and two teachers joining me with this grant. And it's really developing a plan, starting with sixth graders and how they can be more involved in their academic planning, doing career interest surveys, learning about career opportunities, um, and developing a platform for them so that as they build some interest in the lower grades in sixth, seventh, and eighth, we can then hopefully bring courses in that will actually help gear them towards a, a career or trade that they're most interested in, keep them engaged, um, increase attendance, so, uh, we're pretty excited about this one as well. So we're bringing more as we develop that platform. The state has a couple of free platforms, so certainly we'll start there, uh, but, uh, we may be looking at other curriculum materials or resources that we can provide to students to help, uh, introduce them to different career and, and trades that they might be interested in the future. So those are the three most recent grants we're working on right now.
Finance report. All right. Actually, I apologize, any discussion on me, any questions before I just fly along?
I would just have a comment adding on to what Gina just said, that I've been hearing so many positive things about the new, um, special in the middle school with the career exploration, with that, that one. So many of the middle school students just being, coming back and having conversations, I don't know if anyone has, if your kids are touched with it at all, but, um, hearing, hearing kiddos talk about being excited about what career they could have at that younger age and starting to think about it has been really like exciting to hear about, you know, and so adding on to what the grant will be looking at, that's been, I think, an awesome addition to getting them thinking about.
And there's been, what we're finding, just doing this, there's been a lot of things that are being done in isolation. Um, and talking to Ms. Wolf, one of the fifth grade teachers, last year she did a career thing, brought parents in, and, you know, to be able to broaden that so that all students have these opportunities and experiences, um, so that's great. And the guidance councils are very excited about it because it's something that they can then work with the students every year so that by the time they are ninth, tenth grade, they're starting to think about, you know, do I want a four-year college, a two-year college? Do I want to go into a trade? Uh, and there's more purpose to, to why they're coming here, because they know, you know, what it's gonna help them gain.
And the investment and then the, their, their education, you know, that if they know they want to go do, want to do something, they're thinking about it already, they're caring about their grades differently or their attendance differently, you know, and I'm not on every kid, but it's making a difference in that way because they're invested early in what they want to do or they think they want to later.
Right.
All right, finance.
All right, I handed out four, four pages, uh, tonight. First page is the, uh, status of our fiscal year twenty-four operating budget. The non-salary line, we have appropriation of four point three million. We have expenses and encumbrances of almost four point three million. We have a balance, available balance right now of thirty-nine thousand five hundred and ten. Last year at this time, we were at, we had an available balance of two hundred and twenty-four thousand five hundred and twenty-four. So that, uh, available balance of thirty-nine thousand five hundred, hundred and ten is, uh, is concerning. So I want to bring you to the next page. This is a little more detail of that one line item. You can see, and, and I made three groupings, one of them is transportation, uh, one of them is tuitions and everything else. I didn't, do you have a copy?
I can look right here. Thank you. It's okay, I hang with you in the budget conversations enough I was telling you.
Uh, so transportation, we have our special ed and McKinney-Bento and foster care. We have a budget this year of seven hundred and forty thousand. I am projecting, uh, with Jay's help in, in that projection, uh, projected expense of a little over one million dollars. So that leaves a negative balance of three hundred and two thousand in that line item, in those two line items. Tuitions, uh, we have a budget of one, one million, two hundred and forty-four thousand. In this year's budget, uh, we are projecting expenses at one million, almost one point six million. That is another, uh, negative balance of three hundred and forty-two thousand. Uh, assuming all other accounts, uh, hit their budget and break even, which I feel pretty confident that we, we will, uh, we're looking at a, uh, a problem of six hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-six in this year's budget. Now, we've done a lot of work with the budget subcommittee and Jay, uh, looking at circuit breaker and projecting out circuit breaker. We are expecting a extraordinary relief circuit breaker payment this year of about two hundred and seventy-two thousand. We filed, uh, Jay filed that.
Last week.
Filed the paperwork last week, uh, we find out, uh, hopefully shortly, how, if that number is accurate. That represents a seventy-five percent reimbursement, um, which is what they've done the past six years, so I don't, I don't see any change in that. Reserve, there's also circuit breaker reserve relief, um, projecting that we will, will receive fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars this year. So this, we have a negative balance of six hundred and forty-six thousand in these accounts. In our budget, um, we should, we'll be, we should be receiving about three hundred and thirty thousand in relief. That leaves a negative balance of three hundred and fifteen thousand. I have a, or we have a circuit breaker balance, uh, at the end of June thirtieth, two thousand and three, of three hundred and thirty-nine thousand to cover that negative balance. It, it is, it is concerning, but we, we have done a good job over the years of, of not using circuit breaker in the, in the year that we received it. So we've always prepaid, uh, with circuit breaker money, so that allows us to have that cushion of three hundred and thirty-nine thousand to cover that deficit. Next year's a different story. Salary, salary line, um, we have a budget of twen, almost twenty million, five hundred thousand. We have an available balance right now of nine point eight million, if you go to page three. This is that summary, summary I've been putting together, uh, this year, where it takes a look at our year-to-date, uh, by account, by line item, and, uh, I project out the remainder of the year. And you can see at the bottom, um, I'm projecting a total estimated salary of twenty million, three hundred thousand. We have a budget of twenty million, four seventy-eight. So I am projecting that, um, at this point, that we will have a, uh, a surplus in the salary line of a hundred and seventy-five thousand, which doesn't take into account a lot, mo, most of the open positions that we have right now. So if we hire, um, positions from today forward, that will, will reduce that, a hundred and seventy-five thousand surplus, but... So with circuit breaker, with this small surplus I think we're gonna have in salary, I think, uh, we're, we're in pretty good shape for this, this new year.
So operating costs are going up, but our, uh, number of employees is helping our budget come in at a, does that make sense?
Well, uh...
So...
If, 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 say, an ISA resigns, right, and it takes a month to hire a replacement, you have a month's worth, a month's worth of salary, so is that what you're getting at?
Yeah, I, I think it's unfortunate that the reason why we're probably gonna come in on budget is because we can't get people, uh, we can't fill vacancies. Is probably the best way that I can describe what we're trying to get out.
That sounds accurate.
And then, I guess, the only other thing, and forgive me, um, do we have an idea as to how many students are served by, um, some of the costs that are laid out on page two? And what percentage that is of kind of the overall budget?
You would have added district numbers? Predominantly, that's what you're looking at there on page two. So we have eighteen students currently who are out of district, and we have two who are on what's called an extended act.
And that makes up the majority of what we see on page two, so twenty students?
Yes.
Thank you.
Makes up the majority of the tuition line.
Right.
The transportation line, it's, it's significant.
More, a lot more. Lot more students than that.
There's an email somewhere that Jay had sent, I think we ended up getting from Liz that broke it down, the students, but also percentage. Um, I can't, I was just looking at it the other day too, I don't remember the date from when it was, but it must have been sometime in the beginning of January or something when it started coming up, um, if I can find it up over there.
Do we, do we know if similar districts are in a similar spot? Is there, is there anything from either the county or the state that is trying to get ahead of these challenges that all districts are facing?
No, I was at a business manager, my business managers group, four weeks ago, four weeks ago, there were eighteen of us there. Eighteen all said they were having a sit-down. With transportation, with tuitions, it's just, it's...
It's the same with self-chose special education directors, with that meeting, we're sort of going to see the same old. It's just the numbers are, the cost numbers are exponentially jumping.
Which is, which is why I'm a little cautious when I say, uh, we, we will receive extraordinary relief payment at seventy-five percent. We're afraid that there's so many schools out there that are gonna see the problems.
Saying they're gonna reduce that money, that percentage.
Right.
Because in past years, we haven't applied because we didn't meet the criteria. It's gotta be a twenty-five percent increase over what you had the year before, now this year we need that criteria.
As well as many, many other districts.
As, as well as every district on the South Shore, just about.
Please, please, please.
Yes.
How, how, when is this?
For yours?
Uh, I don't know if you can hear me okay, uh, the twenty-four extraordinary relief progression, uh, we have to have those in hand before the next year.
May.
Yeah, they're paid this year.
They should be, they usually paid May.
And, uh, with regard to the one point three million in the coverage, can you give us just a top line example of the coverage?
Yeah, so if we have a student, um, if we have a student that is going out of district and the total cost of that student out of district is, is a hundred thousand dollars, we encumber that hundred thousand dollars, so we account for it or accrue for, so, so it's included in our, um, system as an expense, it just hasn't been paid yet. So as it's paid, the encumbrance reduces and the expense by goes up.
Great, thank you. I, I was talking to the years off going along, so the, so the available to comp salary is thirty-nine thousand. Are, are, are you concerned about that or is it okay?
Uh, 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 I'm concerned about it, but I think, uh, with the work we've done with circuit breaker, uh, in the past five or six years, I think we, uh, have, I feel as though we are, have enough to cover that deficit.
Thank you very much.
John, did I read somewhere recently that if, if someone, if a district is using extraordinary relief, it potentially impacts the amount that they'll be given for something for circuit breaker in the twenty-five budget? You know what I'm talking about, it came out in some sort of summary of Governor Healy's?
Extraordinary relief doesn't affect future circuit breaker payments, but the reserve relief does.
Okay, so we need it this year?
Uh-huh.
And then potentially what we receive for the next fiscal year is lower because we used it?
Would be reduced by the fifty-seven thousand.
Okay.
So by using it, it puts you on our spot for the following year.
I read it like four times, try and read it different, yeah. Try to see something different in there, but it kept coming out the same way, all right, okay.
John, I know, um, you know, the circuit breakers, they're more, it's kind of like a rainy day fund we're gonna use. Are you concerned about next year, the year after, the year after that, where we don't, we can't tap into it like that, so you used it?
Well, in, in the budget subcommittee meetings, I've been presenting, uh, a projection for the next two years. And if things continue with our tuitions, um, our circuit breaker will keep increasing significantly, so...
I feel like some of these expenses, the ones especially we can't control, we have to get those students in, and those are going up every year. I wonder at one point if they're gonna kind of tip the scale where we could get in trouble.
Yeah, at least for, I mean, looking at our, our budget ask for next year, we're, um, it hasn't been finalized yet by the budget subcommittee, but it's, we're gonna see an increase directly result of what's happening with our tuitions and special ed and transportation.
And Jay, do you see, do you foresee any of those students coming back into the district?
They do, um, I mean, we're, we're working on students every, every meeting, turning them back, so I do see some students coming back to us. Some of our students who actually will significant needs are probably over long-term on this one, yeah.
And the last is, uh, page four, it's just been revolving fund balances. Not a whole heck of a lot has changed from, uh, the, the last time I recorded this, we did receive a circuit breaker payment. So you can see that we have a balance, uh, right now, a circuit breaker of six hundred and eight thousand. You'll see athletics, uh, revolving fund at a negative, um, that's because of, uh, boys and girls hockey. Uh, we just sent out, or Patrick just sent out the athletic director, just sent out the invoices to the other towns for their share of, uh... of, uh, of hockey for a co-op program, so we're expecting about tw- twenty-seven thousand revenue to come in, so. Shows a negative, but it doesn't take into account the accounts receivable that are coming in.
Uh, FY twenty-five budget update? I don't have that, so.
No, so that was, we're gonna set the date and the time, so, um, it's up to you. If it's March twelfth, what time you want to have, usually your meetings are at six o'clock, you're taking over a school committee meeting. We just wanted you to take a vote on, it would be March twelfth, and is it six P M., or do you want it at five P M., or do you want it at seven P M.? Do you wanna hold both meetings, the budget hearing and then the school committee, so it's, that was the discussion.
We're gonna probably have a meeting after on that, right?
We have in the past.
So I would say, I don't wanna have it early yet. If you're gonna make a five o'clock?
That's really early. You want people to come to it, five o'clock's too early.
So four?
No, I would do either six and six-thirty, like six for the public hearing and then six-thirty for the meeting, or six-thirty and then seven.
Why can't you have a five o'clock meeting and then six o'clock budget hearing? You can't take a vote on the budget hearing.
No.
I'm just, I, I'm just...
Is five o'clock too early for anybody? Not for me, but...
I work from home, so.
Five o'clock could be challenging.
How about five-thirty?
I will accommodate with speeded, I literally run in from work to get here at six.
Oh, we can six o'clock, yeah.
But I don't wanna change it just for my schedule, if it works best for everybody else, like a long time.
It doesn't matter to me, we're, we're here, so I'm just, I thought you were trying to do it early so you can get both in.
We'll go buy pizza.
If that's good work, if that could work out, it just feels like rearranging work to get over there. So we're gonna do it at six and have the, have which one first, the public hearing first?
I would say so, yeah, and we'll have a meeting after.
Yeah. I think the public hearing last year ended up being about forty-five minutes, right, after it was presented and any questions?
We'll send that out.
Six o'clock and then seven, six o'clock for the meeting and then seven o'clock for the public hearing. I mean, six o'clock for the public hearing and seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock. Uh, MSBA SOI, I need a motion, and then the second to three, this is the paragraph I have here.
I, I would make a motion to, to vote on and approve the MSBA SOI Mitchell School roof windows, um, and you're going to read it?
Have been convened an open meeting on Tuesday, February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four.
We can get a second.
A second.
Go ahead, sorry.
Have been convened an open meeting on Tuesday, February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, prior to the SOI submission closing date. The school committee of East Bridgewater, in accordance with its charters, bylaws and ordinances, have voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the F- Massachusetts School Building Authority a statement of interest form dated February twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four for the Gordon W. Mitchell School located at four thirty-five Central Street, East Bridgewater, Mass. zero-two-three-three-three, which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority category, for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future replacement, renovation, or modernization of the Gordon W. Mitchell roof and windows to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs, and further extend the useful life of the building. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Board Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant or any funding commitment from the Massachusetts Building Authority, School Building Authority, or commits the East Bridgewater Public Schools District to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. That was one sentence.
Any discussion on it? Do we need, anything we can know about it?
Can't keep, we can't keep the heat in if the windows aren't effective and the roof is not effective. And we have a lot of structural deficiencies in the roof. Um, it, we have a lot of leaks, and the, we continue to put money into the auditorium, we continue to put money into the rooms, we continue to put money, um, into the boiler system, um, we need a new boiler down there, or a boiler type of system.
Sounds like we're walking right down the central school path again, which to me, s- you know, like, uh, I, I don't understand why we wouldn't be having discussion with the Mass School Building Authority about some holistic approach for the entire district with regards to both the central and middle school.
So, uh, can I, so tomorrow, we, uh, we are on the docket for ten A M. and one P M. Um, with the MSBA about the central school project. So we'll find out tomorrow if we get the award, um, to go forward with the project. When we first began speaking with the MSBA as the district and the town, we submitted Central School, and while they were here, I asked them in front of probably, I don't know how many people were in the room, fifteen, sixteen people, including John Haynes, Mr. Seelig, Dr. Williams, John Shea, I think a couple of school committee members were there, Brian Kylie, um, in front of everybody, and said, if we were to think of a renovation, reconstruction of a central school, Mitchell School, this and that, we were told at that time, you cannot change the configuration of how you, of how this district is, is being, is run at this time. Mostly it was due to the high school configuration, we can't move like the seventh and eighth grade back. It has to stay like this for seven through twelve for as many years as the, the bond is, I think it's a two, thirty years bond? It's not, she said about, was it thirty years, John? Thirty-year bond, so...
Twenty.
Twenty years, so we're, we're in this for twenty years, and we cannot bring the seventh and eighth grade back down there unless we were to pay the bond off. And then I asked if, what if we were to do some renovation here, and then bring, uh, the third grade back to Central School through renovation, and then bring the seventh and eighth grade? That's how the conversation started at, for the Mitchell School. They said no. Then I said, well, what if we just made this a, a real early childhood, uh, school of pre-K, K, and brought one through six down here, and we made it one? No. And that's what we were told by the MSBA. They said, you gotta stay in the configuration that you have to go forward with the programming. And that's, that's how it was sort of stated at that time, so we said, okay, so they said, if you, so are you asking us, and Charlie was in a meeting where they said, are you telling us that you wanna change the configuration? I said, I'm asking you if we can change the configuration. Would it be, would it be a realistic configuration? Yes. Would it be good for the district? Yes. Would it be good for this? Yes. Um, they said no. Now, if the town wanted to pay for the project, like West Bridgewater, they paid for their own high school, and they did their own bonding, you could do whatever you want. If we go with the MSBA and would fifty-seven point two-four percent reimbursement rate, then no. We have to stay in the configuration that we are right now, which is PK one-two, and keep that building three through six. But I understand what you're saying, um, I, I think we would get, you know, uh, educationally wise, is, is, is the configuration the best? Would we want third grade back? Is PK one-two the best? Is three through eight the best? Is, you know, is K-one-two-three, uh, four through eight, and then nine through twelve the best? Educationally, I think we could have that debate all day long. We're in a program that's sort of dictated of how it works and the reimbursement rates, and we have to stay within their configuration. And that, that's really how that happened. But I understand what you're saying, you know, like, this is just gonna keep happening. And this was something that was said in a meeting to us, I think, last year, that every town in the state of Massachusetts and probably every town across the country needs a new school. At least one of their schools, if it's not a K-through-twelve, one-building schoolhouse, they need a new school. Our schools are antiquated, they are falling down, they, some are in disrepair. Um, as you know, Boston is getting rid of all of their middle schools. They're downsizing, they're pushing people, they're, they're not pushing people around, but they're moving students.
Why would Boston be able to do it and East Bridgewater not be able to do it?
They went into, because they're their own entity, they're not part of... Boston has their own sort of rules on how they, they can move around, but I do know that they're getting rid of all their middle schools, and they're reconfiguring their elementary and their high schools. And they have more charter schools, they have more privates that, that kids go to, but, um, that's what was said at this, this level. But I understand what, what you're saying, it's just, I, I know that Mr. Seelig is working on, you know, I, we've been talking about this since I've been here, that we should have a, you know, if it's this year, it's the central school, the next year it's the firehouse. If it's not the firehouse, then it's the, uh, the police station. It's not the police station, it's the council of aging, and that somebody should get a significant amount of repairs or addition work or renovation work or whatever every year, so that we continue that continuum of making sure that buildings and the properties that we have in the town keep up.
Yeah, we think that that would be a tough facility management to make sure that we have a kind of a plan.
Yeah, I think they're working on a plan. But that was, that was, that was said by the MSBA several times, we cannot move, um, our configuration.
Liz, you had mentioned a while back that parents in the town, everybody in the town can sign up to get a tour of Central to see, you know, the issues.
Yeah.
That had a good response?
Um, they had eighteen responses, and fifteen people came to the day that they had the walkthrough. And Mrs. Byrne said that it was great questions, a lot of people, um, had great questions. A lot of people liked just being back in Central School. She said it seemed like it was like, everybody just like, loved Central School and wanted to walk the halls and see what it looked like then. Um, I asked her if it was good feedback, and most, uh, the feedback that what she had mentioned to me or said to me was, people realize that it needs help, that it's tight. I would hope, I don't know what will happen tomorrow, I would hope that, um, with a new roof and a new boiler, that I don't, I would hope that it'd be renovation and keep the facade and, and keep the, I mean, Central School is special because of the people in Central School. But it's also special because it is our, you know, early elementary, uh, school, early childhood school, and, um, it's right in the center of town. And so hopefully we, we see what happens tomorrow. But yes, that's, that's how many peo-, uh, eighteen people did sign up, fifteen people came, and, um, Kate said there was great, good questions. I don't know if you wanna add to that?
Uh, no, and it's, it was nice because it's very involved people within the community, people that typically come to town meeting, ask those questions. So it's good for them to come and get the information, hopefully spread the word. Uh, we did tell them that we will continue to, to offer those throughout the process, so that people have a better understanding of, you know, what the needs are within the building, because if you're just going in there on a daily basis, you don't see the extent of the needs.
Thank you. Now, my actual next question will be a second round, and our third round's on the other side. Great, any further discussion on the MSBA SOI? Would you like me to read that entire thing again? I'd love to. All in favor? We have two more calls.
Pennington, aye?
Fury, aye?
Sutter, aye?
Walker, aye? Does he have any answers for that, Jay?
It does not.
Ask him. Uh, proposed Cameron Woodard Scholarship approval. Letter here. The East Bridgewater Agricultural, Agricultural Commission would like to form a new scholarship in memory of one of its longtime members, Cameron Woodard. I am including for your review a copy of the bylaws recently approved by the Agricultural Committee. So one award, up to twenty percent of donations, not to exceed one thousand. There's a list of qualifications, voting members, things like that. It's a bill that I imagine. Do you have a motion?
Make a motion to approve, um, this new proposed scholarship, Cameron Woodward Agricultural Scholarship.
Second.
Okay, Scott, that was a discussion.
Go ahead.
Question for Liz, is there a walkout, uh, that we have to follow to, to, uh, scholarship?
This is the format, that the, that the, the monies became available from the agricultural, um, the East Bridgewater Agricultural Commission, um, they're telling you it's one, uh, one award, it's up to twenty percent of donation, not to exceed a thousand dollars. They give the qualifications, student applies, he applies to the district. We bring it in, they have to apply to the, the scholarship form that we have, they'll, and they will choose the scholarship recipient for June. And so you, you're, you're accepting, you're accepting another sco-, another scholarship of a donation for students to, to use going forward. And so yours is just an acceptance?
I understand that, I was just curious, whether, is there a standardized format that somebody has to follow along with to create a scholarship?
No.
Or there's nothing there to explain, like, anybody wants to go, and how you create a scholarship, and how it works, or like? I didn't know a question for that.
That the scholarship committee, or wherever the scholarship's coming, they have to, they have to have their own bylaws, and they have to have a committee that creates how much they're going to give and how much they're going to put forward, and each year through their committee or through their, their organization. So they are, they have to, they have to commit to all of that. Not you, you're just accepting that we will offer the scholarship.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I have a curiosity about it, this is one of those things for me that I think to myself, why are we involved? Right, like, does, does the money pass through?
The schools.
The schools specifically, it is not that the Agricultural Commission hands the student the scholarship? They give the money to the district, the district gives the money to the student, so, no.
There's a whole big process once, once you accept monies to go to a student. But what you're saying is that you agree that the Cameron Woodward Agricultural Scholarship is favored by the school committee of the East Bridgewater Public Schools, and that you are in favor of a child receiving it upon graduation.
I don't understand why we, I, I totally get it, it's not changing it, it's my own curiosity of why, why we're involved.
Why we're involved at all. I believe, I believe because it's financial, and you oversee all finances that come through, and you're saying, yes, the child is going to receive a scholarship through this Cameron Woodward, through our, through this scholarship fund. And then the school receives the scholarship fund, it actually goes to the town. Michael, you were up there for six hours, six hours with the town.
We are a pass-through, that was just why we're involved, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, for not for, not, for not all of them, many of them.
Gotcha.
So some of them come, they all are given to students in our schools.
Yeah.
And that's why it comes before the board, because there's a financial benefit to a student that has a secret. Some of them are trust scholarships.
Okay.
And the money is managed privately, but that goes to the town treasurer's office. And then each year, the town treasurer's office, depending upon how much money is in the, um, interest-bearing accounts, works with the school district to tell us how much value could be placed on the scholarship that year. And then the scholarships are given out, and the, but the, some of them have their own bylaw. So for example, the Eric Ginsburg and the Mark, I'm sorry, not, the Mark Connor Scholarship, that has a private committee, and that committee issues the check to the student. But it still has to go through the school to make sure that the student knows to apply through guidance and knows the, um, the parameters, the qualifications for the scholarship. So, but most of them, the money does come through the school, district, and the town hall. But there's a couple that the, um, somebody on the scholarship committee gives the money to the student. The, the school lets them know who to reset the events.
Gotcha.
Yeah, it's a little confusing.
I get it, with the way you're explaining it.
We're recognizing that the student did graduate, the student is ours, the school committee oversees the judiciary of the district, that there's money coming in to the student, we're saying that, you know, you know, hopefully that the scholarship is there and it's going to a student. If a student applies for a scholarship, we're saying that the, yeah, you know, we support the scholarship, we support the student.
Gotcha. Thank you. Thank you for that explanation.
Guidance does a really nice job of, maybe you've received them already, or maybe too soon, I don't know, but the students can request a packet, and within that packet has all the different scholarships that are available, the criteria, so to be acknowledged, then you become part of the list, and your information will become part of the packet, and the students have access to apply to it.
They actually did that this year, and there is no paper packet. It's all electronic. It's all, all on Google Form.
Make sure you apply, Lilia.
The actual pending vote?
Pennington Eye.
Fierre Eye.
Fiddler Eye.
Walker Eye. Uh, next we have a request from Mickey Lasley, Director of Musical Theater, to discuss a proposed EBJS HS drama trip to Disney in 2026.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi. For those of you who don't know, Mickey Lasley.
You were ready, huh?
I oversee drama at the middle school and here at the high school. Um, I am here specifically for our high schoolers, so it's actually seventh through eighth. Uh, we have done this trip twice in the past, I can't even remember the years, it's been, it was pre-COVID. We did it twice. Uh, I'm coming here to ask for approval. Uh, we've done some preliminary, look, that's why I don't have any papers for you, because nothing is set in stone, I just want to have the opportunity to ask my students if they would like to do this. We have kind of put a bug in the kids' ears and they were loving the idea, um, and the reason we'd love to do this, and we go specifically to Disney, it would be for, I believe, five nights. Um, we do workshops there, they actually do theatrical workshops, and, um, they're wonderful. Uh, you're working with professional people, they take, um, a song, once it was super caliphate realistic, Expialidocious, and they, you actually audition, like, the group goes and they go in for two and a half hours, they have to quickly audition, they either get a part or they don't, then they're ensemble, and they put this little tiny show together, and it's wonderful. And then they show it to, if it's the chaperones or, um, the teachers that are there, they show it to all of us. Um, and they learn things that we teach them here, but sometimes I think they think, oh, you work at a school, you don't know what you're talking about, you're not in the real world, you don't have a clue. Uh, one year we went to Circus Soleil, and the wonderful thing about that was the next morning we got to go backstage, um, and it, I just walked around going, see, we do that, see, we do that. And it gives, because we do have a number of students who go through the East Bridgewater School System, come through drama, and actually want to do this for their career. Uh, we have one student that was, um, in drama, Katie Gettich, she was graduating from Western Connecticut University Musical Theater, um, major. Uh, we have two students this year who are applying to musical theater schools specifically for them. So it gives those kids who, uh, we have another student who's younger, who's looking at pursuing this in other avenues, not just here, but throughout into Boston. Um, so it gives them a glimpse of the real world, because you're working with different people and what it's like to work with different people. So they really love the workshop aspect, so we're looking at maybe two workshops, also going to Circus Soleil. Everything would be included for the kids, breakfast, lunch, dinner, they have vouchers, so parents wouldn't have to worry about that. I'm looking at probably the cost of a thousand eight hundred, roughly in that, but like I said, that's the room, I believe that would be, um, the airfare and the food, could slightly change. And we're doing it on a two-year basis, because any student who does want to participate in this has to sign a two-year contract with drama, so that they have time to fundraise, and we'll fundraise over the two years, so it's not just coming out of the parent's pocket, because I know that is a large amount. Um, so it is a fun, like, we've always, we have to have a minimum of twenty students, um, to do the workshops, so that's why between this year to see what, you know, how the kids feel and how the parents feel about it, and then next year recruiting kids to do the show, and, you know, letting them know it's a two-year commitment, they can't just come in a year from now and say, well, I don't want to go to Disney, that's not how it works. Um, it's a little bit of an incentive, it's also hard work to know, you have to kind of work for something, so, so that's it. Any questions?
Seventeen or eighteen when you last went.
Yes, I think it was seventeen, I think it was seventeen, was it eighteen? Okay, it was eighteen.
Eighteen, I knew it. That was on because my oldest went.
Yes.
I can vote for, it was a great opportunity.
It's a great trip, and they do have fun. We also go to the parks, so they get a three-day park pass, um, and we, we work the parks very much like the music department does when they go to the Great East, um, so they, we're all in the same park at the same time, everyone has, each chaperone will have four or five students, and no, we don't hold their hands, I'm going to be very honest, the younger ones, maybe the seventh, eighth graders might have to stay with their chaperones, but the older ones, we don't hold their hand, we say, okay, can we go stand in a two-hour line, because I don't want to, um, but you have to check in here and here and here, then there'll be four or five check-ins throughout the day, um, no one can leave the gates. Um, Disney, I do feel, is one of the safest places on earth for the kids to be, so I don't worry too much. But then we all get together, one of the fun things we do also, and it is included in this, is we do, you know how you go to the fireworks and everything, and Epcot, they actually have areas they, you can kind of reserve, so we would have a reserved spot where we could all stand, and it's almost like a front row seat to the fireworks over the water of Epcot, and it's a dessert, we get dessert, and so we have our own special, ah, um, I think Joe is there, Mr. McKinnon's son was there one year when we did that, and it's a, it's a fun, it's a fun little part, the kids love it, because they literally have a front row, and it's like, they're not trying to push other people away, so it's a lot of fun.
He has no comment.
He has no comment.
He was saying about the desserts, yeah. I think it's great.
Gordon.
Did you hear that, Gordon?
He always has questions about trips.
Uh, it's a trip to Disney for kids in drama in the next two years. There's a rumor that one of your children did this.
Yeah, so he hasn't come back yet.
So it was a good trip, is it?
It was a good trip. We've actually had a, a student, when I first started, uh, twelve years ago, he actually went and worked for Disney during college, and did, how they have that student, um, so there's a lot of kids who, even from our little town, who actually, it's just a good place for them to be and to learn, and something outside of our little town.
Sure.
Do you remember if you brought us an itinerary, itinerary the last time?
We, I will have that, so there's going to be, other than, once we get closer, um, I'll have specific days we're doing things, sometimes the parks may change, but once we get closer, we'll know which workshops we're doing, um, you know, what night we're going to go to Circus Soleil, so then we'll be very specific, when we're leaving here, we'll have motor coach, um, that will fundraise, we'll get a motor coach from here, so we all do meet, a motor coach will pick us up at the airport, same once we get to Disney, everything is done as a group.
How many chaperones do you think, for like twenty kids?
You know what, if there's twenty kids, uh, families love to go, um, because they love to go, just because it's Disney, so most of those parents do like to chaperone, so we always, I'd say in the past, we had like two kids who were going to chaperone, because we do. And honestly, uh, I'll be going, um, Alexa will be going, um, my other daughter who is choreographed, she'll be going, so we won't just, I can guarantee five, I'm going to be going, um, so I can guarantee, I probably already have ten chaperones already, um, without even, yeah, without even thinking, so we have a good number, and, um, it works really well.
Great. And you probably need to know, so that way you can get started on.
Just so I can actually put the paperwork together for the parents, send out emails, let the kids know, and then to be ready for September, because by then I want to have the contracts made up and stuff like that.
I move that we approve the request from Mickey Lasley, Director of Musical Theater, to, um, approve the EBJ, uh, junior senior high school drama trip to Disney 2026.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
I don't have any.
Pennington Eye.
Fierre Eye.
Fiddler Eye.
Walker Eye.
I want to say, Mickey, thank, thank you for all you do for drama.
Thank you, no, I, I love it here, I don't want to be anywhere else, so, thank you.
And all in your, and the rest of your family, you do a lot for drama.
No, it's kind of like, it's what I've passed down to them, and I do, I do enjoy that part, so, wait till, oh, Mamma Mia, don't forget, oh, you did.
Lilia did.
Lilia's in it.
What's your part, Lilia?
No, you can't ask for that.
I'm going to go.
It's a secret.
What did you ask for?
Oh, part, I'm not a big one, because I'm.
She's a good part, she is. She sings dances. She's great.
Um, before I get to public comment there, uh, I have a packet here on bullying prevention, and the actual chair was going to say a piece on this, I'm going to hold off on this until the next meeting on the twelfth, just because I don't want to speak or say it incorrectly. Public comments. You all here for the drama.
You're the support fund.
Thank you. Scott, yes, if I could, just before you get into actions, I just wanted to mention that, um, you may see, like, you do see a couple people up here, John Sheer forgot his sweatshirt, but we all had, um, our unified sweatshirts on tonight. Um, our unified basketball team, uh, had their jamboree this year, and Whitman Hansen, West Bridgewater, and ourselves, that's just the three teams, um, did a fantastic job. If you wa-, if you were able to stop in to look into the gym, the gym was packed, and so I want to thank the community, uh, their parents, Whitman Hansen, uh, Jeff Sizmanek was here, um, the superintendent of Whitman Hansen, I had texted a picture to Mark Bodwell, he said thank you, he said he couldn't believe how many people were there. Uh, I want to thank the, the student helpers that were out on the court with the kids. Um, it was rea-, it's, it's so nice to see those kids interact with each other, be able to get on a bus, um, have a uniform, and to come in and be part of the program that we offer. And every student should have the opportunity to do so. And so, Jay, to you and your staff, uh, to the coaches, Cam did a terrific job, uh, the kids were terrific, the coaches from the other schools were terrific, the, uh, Whitman Hansen even had a cheerleading team that was unified, um, so, you know, kudos to all of the programs that continue to work with inclusivity into their districts, into their schools, um, and it shows that we can support all students at all levels, um, in all areas. So I want to thank you, and, um, it was wonderful to see. Tonight we also have the jazz, um, the Night of Jazz going on, the Mitchell School was playing, I think about four o'clock, we all walked in there to see the Mitchell School, they were terrific, we got to see seventh grade Stoughton, our, uh, we had Alex Wang here a few years ago, um, he worked here with us in our program, music program, and, um, they stole him from us at Stoughton, and he's now the director of, of band, the band director over there. Uh, the Stoughton kids did a terrific job, um, I, I think it's still going, I'm pretty sure it's still going on, so I know that we wanted to hurry up and get you back down there. But lots of great things going on here, both boys and girls, basketball, state tournaments, um, they're in, I think the boys go to Salem, they're going there on Friday, the girls tonight, tomorrow night, uh, they're away as well.
Nope, they're home.
They're home tomorrow.
Wapping?
Oh, wapping?
Yeah.
So lots of activity going on, uh, cheerleading, um.
Um, we have regionals this week.
Well, okay, I knew, I knew, okay, regionals this week, states next week, the, uh, we've got track and field, we've got a lot of kids out there, so there's so much going on, but you just had Frozen at the, uh, Mitchell School, sold out, uh, couldn't, had standing room only, um, people loved it, it's wonderful to have school and community together. Um, our kids are doing well, our staff is doing well, we've got a great community, we've got to continue to push the envelope for, for inclusivity for all, continue to push the envelope to support building projects, uh, plans, things like this, and how we move forward. Um, we started negotiations with custodians, our assistants, our, our administrative assistants, um, we have our instructional assistants coming up, we have assistant principals, I spoke to their, um, president the other day, they're ready to go. There's a lot happening at the school district, and again, we're in the spring, just came back after February vacation, um, great, you know, math programs, so there's, there's a lot of good things going on, and we need to focus on the good. You know, there's a reason that cars have big windshields in the front, so you can see the good stuff that's coming up and where you're going, and that there's a rearview mirror that's small, and then you look in the back, and you take reference of what you didn't do so well last week, or, or before, and what's, and what's in the back, it's behind us. As we continue to move forward, we're going to do better, and we'll continue to work with our students, our staff, and our community, and just thank you to everybody, I mean, today, just to, to see this place packed and to see, you know, and know how Frozen did, and you came back in with, uh, two years from now going to Disney, we have trips coming up in the spring, I hope we're, we're still okay to go on those trips, um, so, lots of great things. So thank you, Scott, for giving me a moment there.
I actually went to Frozen, I thought it was fantastic, like, the performances were great, the costumes were great, the kids had a blast, the audience was totally into it, I'll be at Mamma Mia, so, I thought it was great, so.
And the turf passed.
Pardon?
And the turf passed.
And the turf, yes, last week we had, uh, the special town meeting, uh, the turf passed, um, and the track for the repairs and the turf, um, we have to upkeep, I don't know any other way to say it, but we have to upkeep, um, last week we had a jumper here from another school out on our track who was called over and asked if they could get ready to do some long jumping, um, outdoors. So we're sought off, we're sought after place, people like coming here, you know, I, I ran into somebody, um, I had my East Bridgewater vest on in Home Depot, and a guy's, uh, man can't remember, he says my daughter played at a soccer tournament at your high school, it's magnificent, it's gorgeous. So when you drive in here, we have something special, and we need to keep it looking like that, so, thank you for your support last week, we truly appreciate it.
So I'm going to just read these and the motions.
Action required, act review and parole warrants, thirty-one PS, dated one thirty-one twenty-four, and thirty-three PS, dated two fourteen twenty-two.
Second.
Vol. call.
Pennington Eye.
Fierre Eye.
Walker Eye.
Fiddler Eye.
Action is required, act review on account table warrants, thirty-two SV, dated two seven twenty-two, and thirty-four SV, dated two twenty-one twenty-two.
Second.
Vol. call.
Pennington Eye.
Fierre Eye.
Walker Eye. And finally, action is required on the minutes from the school committee of January twenty-third twenty-two.
Second.
Vol. call.
Pennington Eye.
Fierre Eye.
Walker Eye.
Can we win out the order?
That's the last, uh, order of business, thank you to EB Cam for recording our meeting tonight.
Yes, Scott.
Yes, sir.
Two quick questions, I would probably generally, one is, uh, did he get his email?
Did you get the initial thirty minutes?
No, it was emailed.
Okay.
Yeah, there was, I believe there was an email sent out to everybody.
We'll, um, reach out and have her be, because I, I have my training, I'm not sure anybody else did.
I did.
Okay, so three of us still, I'll make sure that you and Peter get the, the invite together, she's pretty flexible on her schedule.
And then the other thing for the superintendent to go, is the pre-k enrollment, is that all down for the old people?
Yes, the lottery, the pre-k.
Oh, no, lottery, it's a pre-, not pre-k.
The pre-k.
I went to that, I actually was, I was.
Scott was your representative, or, oh, the, yep. Was it intense, Scott?
Superintendent. No, it was really, it was quick, uh, we had big twenty-two, and it was eighteen spots, it went by fast, and there was no tomfoolery about, so it was pretty, pretty quick.
And we opened up another, a few more.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Hold.
Vol. call.
Pennington Eye.
Fierre Eye.
Walker Eye.
Walker Eye.